You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel ninety-seven. Coming up next is June seventh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the LaPorte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good morning, everybody. I will be conducting the meeting this morning. Commissioner Graham Rosa will be on Zoom. She's, if you hear her voice, you'll know she's in pretty bad shape. But she's at least gonna attend on Zoom. That's acceptable. So I'm gonna call the LaPorte County Commissioners Meeting for Wednesday, June seventh to order. And as usual, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
First off, start us off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, living, free, and just as a rule.
Rule call, please.
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Present.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
And Commissioner Brzezinski.
Present.
You have a quorum, all three are present.
Oh, thank you. Consider the agenda.
Move to accept the agenda as presented.
I'll second that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Consider approval of May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three minutes.
I do, I did not, I received my packet three hours, three business hours ago, and there were no minutes in my packet.
Motion to approve.
No.
Yeah, I got them. I had a motion to approve.
Go ahead and second if you'd like, Mr. President.
All right, I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Consideration of claims.
Commissioners, we have two payrolls, one for the period ending April, I'm sorry, May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of one million, four hundred forty-five thousand, four dollars and eighty-five cents. And then for the period ending May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of one million, four hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred ninety-six dollars, thirty-four cents. And then there are operating expense claims in the amount of five million, six hundred sixty-one thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars, fifty-four cents.
I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
And I was actually able to, I spent last first two hours this morning going through this, so I will second it.
Motion second to approve the claims as presented, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, I do have a question for our auditor. That, there was a check cut April twenty-sixth for Friedman and Associates. Is this still laying on your desk?
I am in possession of that check, correct?
Pardon me?
Yes, I am in possession of that check.
I'm sure you have some sort of good reason to not.
Yes, I do have a good reason, and the good reason is that I have a legal case where Mr. Friedman has sued my office, and I have not received the support of either the Commissioners to pay from their budget from my attorney that I'm entitled to, nor from the county council, where we have evidence that Mr. Friedman has coerced and intimidated various public officials who are refusing to pay my bill, there's a statutory, a moral, and a legal, and an ethical obligation to pay those bills, and those bills need to be paid.
Yeah, I knew you had a real good reason. Yes, that needs to stay out. You're right.
I'm sorry, just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe that was relevant to the motion that was carried, so I'm just gonna ask that we move on, thank you.
Not at all, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is public comment, anyone from the public?
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street, Michigan City, Indiana. I'm here to talk about the Michigan City Courthouse. A couple of weeks ago, I was there, and a person was going up the wheelchair ramp, and they rolled right back down and hit the rail kinda hard. I started looking, looking up the ADA, I think it's supposed to be one inch of rise for every one foot. I don't think the handicap ramp in Michigan City is safe, and I don't think it's in compliance with the ADA Act. I just, I don't believe it is. I will appreciate this county, county commissioners, if you guys can check into that for somebody, for someone gets hurt. There's a lot of people that's trying to get in there, and I thought we was trying to make the courthouse handicap accessible, but that ramp is very steep, the pitch is, is way, looks weird, it don't look right. And then on another note, we, the people, would like to know where are we at with the hiring of the HR director? I don't care who it is gonna be, I mean, how long are we gonna have to wait to have that done? It shouldn't, I don't, it seem like it's almost a year now. Whatever has to, whatever's gonna happen, it needs to happen one way or the other. A lot of us in the community would like to see something on a permanent basis. And then last but not least, this last back and forth that I just, just witnessed, as a taxpayer, we're tired of seeing this. Not criticizing no, no party here, but it seem like the personal dislikes for one another has melded into doing the business of the people. That is wrong. You are a public servant, you are an elected official. We can just go ahead and take care of these bills, if that's what we need to do, take care of. If there's a conflict, maybe you need to find somebody else to hand the check over, or to resolve whatever issues they may be. Today, it just happened to be the check, I just heard it, so that's why I'm reciting the check part. I'm not holding nobody at blame, but all of us in this audience, we are tired of the bickering. Just pay Sean Freeman, he's not here no more, pay him off and let's move on. We need a HR director, let's hire HR director and let's move on. Then last but not least, I don't understand how, why are we continually hearing about elected officials not hiring people because of their skin color? We have departments that refuse to hire African Americans, or someone because they're brown skinned or whatever. If that be the case, and I don't know if that's the case or not, it's just the rumors keep going around, if that's the case, it needs to stop. We pay our taxes just like everybody else. We get the right to stand in front of this, this podium, we pledge allegiance to the same flag, we bleed the same way. To deprive somebody of job because of the color of their skin, or their gender, or their religion, is wrong. We know it's wrong. We need to start doing the right thing, and we need to practice what we preach. We got departments in this county that refuse to hire African Americans, that is wrong. We can do better, we better than this, we can do better than this. When I voted for a lot of Republicans, and I don't regret it, and I probably gonna do it again, I voted not because you was white, I voted because you was the most qualified candidate in my eyes. And that's what, and I'm gonna continue to do that. We can do better than this. The day has come that we change the way we behave and we treat each other. This board should show decorum to everyone, and everyone should show decorum to this board. When that, when the board sets the example, things will change in the community. So it's time for you to set the example, let's get rid of all this nonsense that's going on in us, in our county, and make this county right for everyone, thank you.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Let the record show, I agree with everything you said this morning, you're right. I don't know what departments are discriminating, I know it's not with HR, or with our secretary, or with maintenance, or with juvie, or community corrections, but if it's going on, and I find out about it, I would raise hell with that. I agree with you on our HR director, I've been, I have been trying my best to get that to move forward. If I can get the council to actually move forward on that, it will. And thank you for bringing up about the Michigan City Courthouse ramp, I weren't aware that that was an issue, but I will definitely have people check into it.
Yes, it's leaking all over the place, and also the parking is terrible.
The parking is something else, I've had complaints.
Mr. Haney tried to resolve that, I guess, I don't know what's going on with that, but since you brought that up, and thank you for being respectful towards us, and we gotta keep this going, this dialogue. You brought up your secretary, I heard rumors that they won't even give her a raise. And I just, this is stuff that I just, I've been hearing, and if this stuff is true, it's a sad day in LaPorte County. Because we have the right as citizens to be treated fairly, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, anybody else for public comment?
Mrs. Graham Rosa, hi. Gentlemen, morning.
Morning.
Auditor. So I'd like to preface my comments before I get going here, and it's just so happens that it's a hot topic this morning. I was a businessman in this community for over thirty years, I dealt with some of the largest and smallest corporations that we've had.
Your person, I apologize, sir, your name?
I said it, it was Pat Meany. Maybe I didn't say it, I don't know. Forty-seventy-eight West Schultz Road. LaPorte, Indiana. Okay? I'm good? Okay. Anyway, like I said, I've been in business for over thirty years before I got out and dealt with a tremendous amount of industrial operations here in town. So I'm here personally as an individual and on behalf of Friedman, okay? I am not his friend, I'm an acquaintance, not a personal friend. But I have obviously done business with him. You folks are involved in the lawsuit that he's got going on right now, that I'm very engaged in. And this check that we're referring to for over eleven grand appears to be being held up by the auditor because he's upset that he's being personally sued.
Point of order, your honor.
I have the floor, please. I have the floor.
Okay, I'm gonna respond to this.
That's fine.
Just so it's clear.
Mr. Chairperson Matt?
Yes, please, in the background.
And here, thank you, Mr. Chairman, no disrespect to the public comment here, but in, in order to comply with the proper protocol under Robert's Rules of Order, we should not be identifying people by name, all comments should be made to the chairperson or the chairman, which is you, Mr. Chairman. So I just ask that any public comments be directed to you, Mr. Chairman, and not see any names.
The point of order, if I may also, is that he was ascribing personal motivations to my actions, which is also not acceptable.
Mr. Chairman, I think I addressed him as auditor and not Stabos, but regardless, and I'll adhere to what you want me to do.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so let's go back to it, basically what we have here is an auditor, Mr. Chairman, who is using his office as a tool to withhold payment to bills that have been approved by the Commissioners and submitted for payment. Mr. Stabos, in emails which I will present to the board, has basically said in a May twenty-sixth email that he was gonna hold on to Mr. Friedman's February litigation until he himself got paid, that would be the auditor.
That is not accurate, that is not accurate.
Well, I have the email.
Attorney getting paid, not me.
It doesn't matter, you're retaliating. So what we have here is that, that's wrong, period. When I was in business, we never got to the point where a corporation would refuse to pay just because they hold the purse strings, and that's what this auditor is doing, Mr. Chairman. So I have.
Point of order, he's describing motivations, negative motivations to me, which is against your rules on, on public decorum.
Mr. Chairman.
He doesn't know my motivations, he's judging them?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, again, I would just advise the, the board through you, Mr. Chairman, that any personal motivations or anything that can be construed as personal should be avoided, thank you.
Yeah, I, well, I think we'd all appreciate that, Mr. Meany.
Sure. To begin with, as far as the auditor's comment about personal motivations, you know, I thought that it was relevant that his actions should be brought forth to the board. We're up here to complain as individuals and as citizens. If I can't say a negative thing, then what am I doing? So I have a problem with that. I am not, I am not making these comments baseless. I have emails that have been authored by the auditor and sent to you individuals, and to Mrs. Graham Rosa, and to a few other people on this chain that specifically states why he's doing what he's doing. I think you've read them, and I think you have to agree, it's vindictive. So I would like, you know, I mean, if I can't say things without the attorney and without the auditor yelling at me, I would like to present into the record this email chain and another email chain that is actually very criticizing of Mr. DiMartino. And I think in both of these chains will lay bare what the action of our auditor is, Mr. Chairman. May I approach?
Yes, you may.
Top copies you've probably already read, bottom top.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Pat.
And I'd like you to put it in the, in the record.
I'll do that.
Thank you, Mr. Meany.
Yes, you can.
While you're distributing these, I don't speak on behalf of the chairperson or, or our attorney, but I, I believe what, they're not saying they're presenting the, the facts or any factual statements is, is not allowed, just simply the ascribing motivations perhaps is, is where the disconnect might be. But being able to present the information, of course, is obviously, you're right, in my opinion.
Information ready for the public record, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Tim Stables, LaPorte County Auditor, it's working, I don't hear anything. Well, I was hoping that the admonitions and the guidance and the high-mindedness of our, of our new county attorney to build each other up rather than tearing each other down is something that we're gonna follow, was inspirational. It was authoritative, and it was a place that we needed to go. There is a dispute between the auditor's office. As we all well know, there's a dispute between the auditor's office and Friedman Associates, because back in July of two thousand and twenty-one, when I first requested emails from Mr. Friedman, and he provided them to my office, the auditor, in his auditing capacity to protect LaPorte County's finances, and from being, I'll use the word potentially defrauded by a vendor, found that Mr. Friedman had charged the county for directly contacting without the authority of the Commissioners in any way evidenced certain political forces in Michigan City.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
And lobbying.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm gonna have.
Oh, no, no, I'm talking.
This is a political.
I'm talking.
Speech.
I'm just.
This has to do with the lawsuit that is active.
No, no, we're not going.
We're not gonna have it.
No.
We're not gonna have it.
No, the auditor gets to speak, you let Meany speak, I get to speak.
Mr. Stabos, I'm not trying to stop you from speaking.
I'm not, I'm not stopping.
I'm just trying to make a comment here.
No, please do not interrupt, the auditor gets to make his statement.
As a gentleman.
Now, I'm going to explain what's going on in my office, so please do not interrupt. So there is a dispute.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm laying out the facts, there is a dispute.
I will, I will.
There is a dispute between the auditor's.
Maybe we'll adjourn this meeting.
Recession.
If you don't stop. Fine, we, we pay the gentleman to give us advice, his advice is, we're not gonna talk about.
You allow Mr. Meany to attack a committee illegitimately, and the auditor will get to respond as a matter of law.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not trying to stop anyone from speaking, I just wanted to make.
Interrupting his speech, is what you're doing, when he's very cogent and he's making his point, please do not interrupt it. He needs to speak.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just, wanted to make the comment that this seems to be a topic about pending litigation.
I know.
I'm just advising.
No, it's a personal lawsuit illegally sued filed against the auditor when it shouldn't have filed against the county, and since it's against me personally, then I can talk about, 'cause it's not against the county.
Sir.
Even though it should be against the county, and that's part of the point, Mr. Paycheck.
Mr. Commissioner, I was asking since.
This is a gimmick on your part, and I'm gonna keep talking about this, actually.
The commission does not make a comment.
So I'm standing here and not going anywhere, and I'm going to speak about this, and that's what's gonna happen, so.
No personal attacks.
We're currently being sued, I'm being sued personally by Mr. Friedman. I discovered in June, July of two thousand and twenty-one, and showed Councilman Novak and Councilman Yagalski and Attorney DiMartino four items that clearly were inappropriate to being charged by Mr. Friedman to the county, including sending emails about COVID, CNN dot com articles to the Health Department and charging for it. They're in charge of health, not Attorney Friedman. Lobbying, lobbying groups in Michigan City and elsewhere to be at that county council meeting, even though he's the county commission attorney, you gotta get to that county council meeting and lobby for a certain action that he wants to see happen. These are illegal, these are inappropriate actions, so we've been in dispute. He subsequently stopped providing emails once I discovered those. Those, the three councilmen and the attorney were shocked and thought it was wrong that he did charge for these things. Subsequent months, I asked for emails, he wouldn't provide them. Commissioner Haney asked for the emails that I asked for, he wouldn't provide them to the commissioner who's his client. So we're in court, he sued me personally, which is a sham, and I expect and have asked for the defense and support and the money of LaPorte County to protect LaPorte County from the antics of Mr. Friedman. Mr. Friedman has extorted the council people and the commission and terrorized and intimidated them, and I have evidence of that, because I've been told that by people such as Mr. DiMartino, of actions by Mr. Friedman, don't give him the money, don't give him the money, don't give him the money. These are actions that are illegal in their essence, I intend to report this, and have reported actually to the county prosecutor, and to the, intended to the sheriff as well, and it needs to be investigated, because it's inappropriate for the auditor to not have the support of the finance authority, the council, and the commission, when he's trying to protect LaPorte County from a rogue vendor. So that's what's going on here, Mr. Meany is misguided, Mr. Friedman asked people to go up and expose and do this type of thing, I, I'm sorry for that situation, but, so that's a little bit about what's going on here, and the auditor has an attorney bill dating back from last year to defend the people of LaPorte County that needs to be paid and not extorted by Mr. Friedman among public officials who are afraid of him to not pay that bill, that's sleazy.
You need to get help. Anybody else for public comment? Step right up, sir.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
My name is Tom Sharp, I live in, at twenty-one, twenty-two South Taylor Road in Mill Creek. A strong advocate for the recreation trail of connecting Mill Creek and Fish Lake. And also a member of the committee that's been working with you folks on that. And several weeks ago, you folks were presented with a petition from some of the good people in Fish Lake that are against the trail. And I have a copy of that here, and what I wanna do as public record is to correct some of the statements that are in here, okay, let me do that. First of all, the bike path would cross County Road two hundred, that bike path does not cross County Road two hundred. The bike path would cross a set of railroad tracks, the bike path does not cross a set of railroad tracks. Roads, the road that we're talking about, they say that's heavy with traffic, is the Longshore Drive Road. And that road is a dead end, and there is not high level of traffic on it, okay? Who is going to oversee and police the area, I'm not sure what the oversee means, the policing the area with the responsibility of the community, and we'll see that that gets done as such, okay? So with that, that's the corrections as such, it's a little disappointing that a project that can help two communities so much that now we have on hold, as I understand it, because of misinformation. And I, speaking for the over five hundred and fifty people on our petition that favor this trail, we'd like to number one, see this come off of hold and move forward. And I really appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, I've been kept up with this project from the beginning, and I know Mr. Bishop is in charge of that. And the way I understand it, the reason, and I get emails all the time from both sides.
Okay.
Yeah, that, part of the land where this trailer would go across, that the owner has not given permission to, to use that. So it's, it's still in negotiations, but I know Mr. Bishop is pretty passionate about getting it completed. And so we are working on it, and you're right. It was, Dr. Phil says, no matter how flat you make a pancake, there's gonna be two sides to it, and we're hitting both sides coming in, and it'll be worked out, but thanks for your comments, I appreciate that.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Anyone else for public comment?
How you doing? Bob Vaughn, five oh five Eighth Street, LaPorte, Indiana. I'm here to voice a little bit of complaint, hopefully won't go to bed. Got here a tax bill, I assume everybody in this county gets one of these, unless they rent, but you have to pay it twice a year, May tenth, and the next one coming up is November thirteenth. The county says on the documents provided, you can pay it by mail, if it's postmarked. There's a couple little, you know, excuses here that would deny that they accept the payment. Or you can use the drop boxes located on county property. It used to be the one in the circle, but because of the construction, you can't get to it, so they constructed another one. It's not indicated on the tax bills, but there's actually two of them on the LaPorte City, within the city limits county complex. Okay, so for years, I've worked out of town, and I paid by using them drop boxes. And they got these handy little slips here, says you can child support, the second item is taxes, traffic tickets, small claims, other payments. Butch payment in there, you're supposed to write the taxes and put it in there, says it has to be paid by May tenth, or coming up is the thirteenth, but on those dates, nowhere on that document, on the tax document, on those receptacles out there, does it say it has to be paid by four P M. So I dropped, like I have been for years, in that drop box on the day it was due. This year, I look, and I was looking at on the county website, and it noticed I didn't have a credit for my tax payment. So on May twenty-eighth, at nine thirty, nine oh three A M, I went in and talked to A Linda at the five fifty-five office. She said the drop box is cleared at four P M and five ten, anything after that is considered late. I said, as far as I know, that five ten goes from twelve oh one to eleven fifty-nine fifty-nine. The box doesn't say it has to be paid by four o'clock, the document that I get from the county doesn't say it has to be paid by four o'clock. I dropped mine and my mother-in-law's off in there. Well, you're gonna have to pay a five percent fee until after July tenth, I believe it is, and you gotta pay ten percent. I said, that's crap. It says five ten, doesn't say five ten at four P M on any document that I've got. I understand that it's a convenience for us, and I appreciate that. But if the county wants to get to the hour, then they need to put it on the documents, they need to put on the receptacles, every other piece of paper that they wanna hand out to do with these taxes. Instead of trying to give me, and I'm not the only one, there was a stack there that she had to go through, and I said, well, my mother-in-law's was in a colored envelope. Mine was written on the outside, taxes drop off five ten. And she went through that, and very nice lady, very professional, very courteous. Everybody I've worked with in the county has been fantastic on any issue. I don't have a lot of them, but every one I've had has been great. Not done yet, if you'll, I mean, a little more latitude here, because it's only five percent, but I've been doing it for years. But I'm gonna tell you, and you hear it, this crap show that's going on in here, I don't know what the heck is going on, because I. going on in here, I don't know what the heck is going on because I, you shake your head, but I'm telling you what, they're sick of it. They're sick of it. I'm sure some of these employees are sick of this. And this is just a little 5% thing, but it needs to be fixed. Because if it's pokes marked on the 10th, it's legally in the hands of the government, right, sir? You're the lawyer, right?
I don't get legal opinions during meetings, sir.
Okay. Well, the answer just said yes. And if I backed my car in there and knocked it off, or if I went over there with a baseball bat and beat the hell out of it, I'm going to get picked up by the county sheriff because I'm beating up the county property. So it was in your possession. If you want to get by the hour, or you, and she said, well, how are you going to document? Well, if you want me to drag my wife down here, I'll do it. But she's just as pissed off as I am. And so if you want to check that, put a clock on it. There might be a camera on that one there. I got a silver van. It was about 7:00 PM, I think. It was still twilight out there. But it was on 5:10. It was on the day that every document says it had to be there. So apologize.
I think you have a legitimate complaint, but I wanted to point out that that would be in possession of the assessor and the treasurer's office. And they're both elected officials, and we have zero authority over their offices. However, it doesn't mean that we can't talk with them and suggest that maybe, I believe you have a legitimate complaint, you know?
Well, on a financial aspect, because you guys are in charge of the dollars and cents, because you just approved a bunch of money. I understand it was only $1,400 that's laying there because she, that was the 28th or due the 10th. So it's over two weeks that you guys were holding in envelopes. And there was a stack of them there. And I don't have a lot of taxes. My taxes is about $1,200 a year or something like that. So you guys are missing a lot of money. So being fiscally responsible for the, this county, you ought to say, hey, wait a minute, because they weren't even cashed on the 10th or the 11th. It was the 28th. That check has just gone cleared here a couple of days ago. So you guys are missing out on a ton of money. Because if she had to stack that high. So fiscally responsible, whether you're overseeing them or not, you're overseeing the money, you ought to have be it down there instead of this Mickey Mouse bullshit that's going on. Get down there and start giving some people some hell and say, hey, wait a minute. I don't care if it did come in on the 11th. They walked in and paid it in person on the 11th. You get that check cashed and get it in there so we can start getting some interest on it. I'm getting 5% on some money, which used to be nothing. Now it's something.
I will address that with the people who are in charge of it.
So I'm expected to pay this 5% penalty is what you're telling me. I want an, I want, I want an answer.
Authority, sir.
Mr. Chairperson.
We really have nothing to do with, Commissioner have nothing to do with that.
Mr. Chairperson, this is a public comment. It's not a question and answer scenario. But I will address the commission and say, for the benefit of any real estate taxpayer, to address their concerns with auditor, with the assessor, I'm sorry, with the assessor or treasurer to seek, treasurer, thank you, with the treasurer to seek waiver of any penalties for substantial compliance and any ambiguity that might have happened. That's how I direct any citizen.
The only ones that have that authority, we do not.
We, an ordinance was, if I may, an ordinance was passed last year granting the authority to the treasurer and auditor to get to waive certain penalties if they agree. And I certainly agree that in these cases, they should, they should all be waived.
So I need to come down and make an appointment with somebody, the treasurer, the auditor, you guys?
It starts at the treasurer's office. That's where you pay the taxes.
Here we go. All right. Well, I hope you have a better day.
Request a formal waiver. Request a formal waiver of the penalties.
And if I don't pay it, then I want to keep incurring our fid.
Anyone else present that has?
Things in the county that makes us say wow. How we doing? I'm Randy Beach, 4177 West Schultz Road, LaPorte, Indiana. And it's been a few months since I wanted to come and speak in front of you. It's been, I've been thankful for the approach the board has been taking on stopping the industrial business from continuing operations in our residential neighborhood. Many, myself and many of my neighbors have been using our backyards and porches for the first time in many years. For the first time since 2015. I truly believed that the political word salads had been removed from the actions and interactions of the neighborhood after the years of conversations, many which we have had. That was until the other day. We started having truck traffic running south on 400 West, east on Schultz Road again. This is after the neighborhood finally had got the signs reinstalled after years of being wrongly removed. They were originally ordered and placed in the neighborhood as a safety for the community, August 3, 2016. After I followed up with calls to the sheriff's office and hearing the sheriff state that I had to approach, approach this commission for answers, I'm back. My first question and thought is, who should I address as the sheriff if the sheriff won't answer questions and I got to come to you? One of the questions I started asking the sheriff was why not follow the ordinance 2020-2 traffic rules? Many statements went back and forth between him and I, and the last comment was that I had to approach you, you gentlemen. And Connie, you do, Ms. Granarosa. After more questioning, I heard that there was one meeting between one commissioner and the highway superintendent, and I believe the sheriff was present as well. And they have determined that the ordered sign installed by votes by all sitting board members at a previous commission meeting was now a safety hazard. Who assessed this? I questioned. I also questioned why there, why it's only dangerous when the trucks are heading towards LaPorte and not heading towards Michigan City. The wait signs were once again removed by a county by an individual's order and not a rescinded vote that should be conducted. As far as the word salad goes, again, I was told this was for safety. I asked whose safety was it for? I also asked who made the determination on safety, and I could not get names or faces or any statements to back anything. I have since asked for FOIA request on the number of traffic accidents on the intersection of Schultz Road and 35 and Highway 4, 435. When properly lining up a vehicle to exit highway, or Highway 400 West onto Highway 35, you have over one half mile of visibility. Just it's unlimited visibility, left and right, north and south. Great visibility. The amount of visibility exiting Schultz Road onto Highway 35 gets you approximately 450 feet from the north because of a curve and 550 feet from the south. That's because of a hill. How is reduced reduction time for all other traffic approaching that intersection, approaching trucks pulling out into the highway safer? Safer for who? And why is it only safer when the trucks are going to LaPorte and not Michigan City? Again, who's making the statements about the safety? Who made the request and why the change? And who, again, just up and took the signs down again? Once again, I'm asking for the signs that were installed to protect our neighborhood be placed back in the, were placed there by the previous commission to be reinstated or reinstalled. I am also asking that you instruct the sheriff to follow the local codes that are in place. I'm not asking for nothing more than notice offered to all citizens of LaPorte County. Why should we get treated any different than the rest of the neighborhoods in the county? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Beach. Thank you.
I appreciate any rebuttal on that. I mean, everybody else got rebuttal.
No, I would just ask, Mr. Paycheck, could you look into the permissibility of one commissioner unilaterally acting against a board vote to change, be it signs or anything else? Thank you. Yeah, I'm not expecting an answer right now, but if you.
Can I expect the signs to be reinstated? I mean, the signs just got randomly taken down. To me, when a sign's randomly taken down, to me, I call that theft.
Check with the highway department and find out.
I checked with the highway department, and he will not give me any answers. I checked with the sheriff, and he says I have to approach you. So I did question the sheriff on the same thing. If he's stepping down as sheriff and becomes the deputy because I got to approach you, who's the sheriff? Who's the sheriff in our town right now, in this room? He told me I had to approach the people in this room. Who's the sheriff? I think it's a fair question.
I see the sheriff here, but I'd say we will.
Step up here and.
We will look into.
Or not debate this.
And we're not, we're not.
I got the email.
Randy, we're not going to.
I know. I understand. I understand. Mr. Mr. Zesinski, I understand your position on this totally.
We will look into it and find out what's going on. It's news to me.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else in the, in the room for public comment?
You should sit. Again, who's making the statements about this?
Just to provide an answer, I am the sheriff of LaPorte County. I was duly elected last November. I don't have the authority to remove signs or give orders to have signs removed. So I have nothing to do with that. I just want to make that perfectly clear. I try to stay in my lane at sheriff's office and not get involved with county highway or county sign business. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff.
Anyone on Zoom?
Yeah, can you hear me, Rich?
Yeah, I hear you.
Okay. This is Darryl Borton, Michigan City. You know, I think it's time for the nonsense to end and the auditor to do his job. Maybe we should, maybe the county should start holding his checks back and maybe he'll do his job. And as far as paying his legal fees, Tim, we paid enough for your nonsense.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. This is public comment, not direct attacks or.
Okay, I know. I know. I'm sorry.
Speak about people personally.
Mr. President, we paid enough for the nonsense. It's time for him to do his job, or maybe he should have stepped down as auditor.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? No one else in the room? No one on Zoom? Public comment is over. Department heads, comments? Any department heads?
Hi, Mr. Chair, commissioners. Real quick, Sean Fitzpatrick, Director of Facilities, just to give a quick update of what we have been doing and what we got going on. So we're bumping along at work orders. They're constantly coming in. I encourage everyone to continue doing that. That's the fastest way to have our team respond to any issue you may be dealing with in any of our facilities. If you don't have access to the link to the work order system, you can contact my office and it'll be provided to you. In the month of April, I wasn't able to make it here to report. So we had 554 closed work orders. And the month of May, 624 closed work orders. And as of right now, we got 49 work orders that have come in that are paper deliveries. So 91 cases of paper. Start up, I had that one in. At year to date, well, month to date for June, we are at 134. So we've been working along and getting them as they come in and trying to prioritize them based off the urgency of the work order. So we were able to do power washing around the courthouse. We got the parapet wall and the big planer boxes outside the main entrance to the courthouse power washed and cleaned up. So we're going to be preparing to get the landscaping and flowers out. Hopefully, they'll be in bloom by the time we make it for the 4th of July parade and all the festivities. So now we end up, had a big grease trap had to be cleaned out at the juvenile services center. So that was another one that was kind of overdue, and we were able to get that rectified. And there, they got some good flow out there now. Here at the annex, we had to replace a domestic hot water line that was about two inches in diameter and about 20, 30 feet spanning across the boiler room. And it was supplying hot water to the jail. And it was something that had been patched several times over the years. And it was to the point where there was no more repairing it. It had to be replaced. So that was an emergency repair we had to get done. The courthouse, the second floor, we're having issues with the LG units that run at about 50% capacity right now. The past week or so, we had the service technician from LG come out and give us a quick update on what, what our units were performing at and recommendations on what to do to improve their performance. And what was recommended, the components alone are going to be about $7,000 to replace and repair. And that's not including having the service tech out. So I'm waiting for that bill to come in. And we have the, most of the parts have come in. We're waiting on the rest. And then we'll be scheduling around June 12, 13 to 14 to make those repairs to the LG units. And hopefully, we can get those areas back up to 100% capacity. We spent about 881 man hours at the fairgrounds, working on various things in preparation for the upcoming fair and other maintenance out there, not including the 694 hours of mowing and weeding that we have to do ongoing until we, you know, turn the fairgrounds back over to the fair board. So another quick update, we have about five new part-time housekeeping employees. So I've been working diligently to increase our housekeeping staff. So we're able to accommodate as many offices as we can daily to get the cleaning done. So it's been, you know, sometime where there was only, you know, a few housekeepers to try to do the entire county. So I've been just diligently, you know, recruiting and trying to get people in. It's hard with only offering part-time positions to get staffing. But luckily, we're finding people that have full-time jobs and, and want some extra cash. So we've been able to supplement our staffing these that way. And I'll continue to do so until we either at the capacity we need or we have more staff through our budgetary process to do that. So that was all I had. And any questions, I'll be willing to answer.
I'd say you're probably the one department head that I talk with the most. And I know you've got an awesome responsibility, and I just would state publicly, you're doing a really good job.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads?
Good morning. In lack of an actual stormwater department head, I am the consultant. So I'm going to give you an update. We are in a, a position with Item that we ask for an extension on submittals of some of the permit requirements. The annual report will go into Item on June the 15th, and that completes basically what our initial contract was. So we have to look at that. And then you're going to be required to get the stormwater quality management plan in by July the 1st or by July the 5th. Actually, Item has informed me that they will be up here doing a complete permit audit, probably before the end of July. If we're non-compliance with the permit, we will be given 72 hours to correct that and then come up with a plan to correct that so that we don't stand to lose any federal highway dollars or state revolving loan funds. So we're moving forward. Going to be in your lap.
Thank you, Ms. Granarosa. We really appreciate your effort and support here.
Any other department heads? Seeing none, oh, anybody?
Just the parks. Nobody, right? Jeremy Sabecki from the Parks Department just wanted to update you. We did get our permitting for the new restroom at Creek Ridge. So we tore down the, the vault toilet that was there. We did get a portable toilet just in the meantime while we're, while we're building that. So you'll see some construction going on out at Creek Ridge very soon. So just, that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our parks are something to be very proud of. Any other department heads?
Mr. President, I have an update on our parking situation at Michigan City Courthouse.
Go ahead.
So I've been, as you all know, I've been working diligently to try and find a, some sort of solution, even if it's just temporary for parking overflow at Michigan City Courthouse. Yesterday afternoon, we finally wrapped everything up. So I have been able to, with the help of the owner of the old Fifth Third Bank up there, secure 20 parking spots for our county employees to be able to park there. Don't start parking there just yet. We need to get you a, a little slip to put in your window to make sure they know who's, who's car is supposed to be there and who's not. But that is the update there. We'll have that. And also, I heard my name referenced earlier in regards to some documentation was requested. That was, I don't remember exactly how it was phrased, but there is documentation I had requested from the Friedman Associates in regards to some documentation for some invoices that were submitted and that those requests are still outstanding now, obviously, multiple, multiple months. So thank you, Mr. President.
Any other department heads? Seeing none, department head is closed. We're going to move on. Do we have any old business? Don't believe we do. New business? Consider reassignment of the county credit cards. Little bit of history. Since I've been in county, county government for about 17 years. At one time, when Mrs. Houston was the commissioner, and this county had one credit card. And if you wanted to charge things to the county, you went through Mrs. Houston. That was passed on when she left office to. That was passed on when she left office to auditor Joey Winski. Again, one credit card. And we didn't have a lot of issues with the way that went. Now, to my surprise, there's several credit cards. And apparently, a credit card system got hacked because there was a charge that the auditor's office could not find out who it was, where it came from with multiple inquiries. Decided that it must have been a false charge from somebody outside. So they stopped payment on the credit card. But right after they did that, we had six people from the county prosecutor's office who were at a conference in Indianapolis. They'd all been approved. We went to check in the hotel and the hotel goes, sorry, your credit card's no good. So I believe what we need to do is get better control of this credit card system. We don't need as many as we have floating around. We need to get it under control and I would recommend that what we do is sit down with our attorney and revamp our system so that we can have better control of the credit card system. And I would entertain a motion that we undertake that.
May I ask something? I would recommend respectfully that you include Auditor Winski. She knows more than I do about the history. She was an eight-year auditor, I mean, a two-and-a-half-year auditor.
Talked with her this morning.
There were multiple cards under Joey Winski as well. Because we had multiple cards, we were able to give a different card number to the prosecutor so he could charge his rooms just for the record. One of the things that is the balancing act is if we have one credit, I'll just say this very briefly publicly, because I think it should be taken offline for a discussion amongst all of whatever officials you deem, I recommend. There's a statute that creates a designated holder of the credit card, who is essentially the credit agent for the county. The commissioners had kept Joey Winski as that credit agent because they knew that there were, before giving it over to me, because they knew that there had been department heads that were irresponsible, frankly, with the card and charging personal things. So they wanted to keep a tight leash. You know, the tightest leash is to have one person control the card, which was the auditor under Joey, but there were some cards that other department heads had who were trusted and did a lot of charges. The problem with having one card for the auditor is that then department heads are, I'll say degraded in a way where they have to call the auditor and the auditor, the auditor's office, the chief deputy, whoever it is, is calling hotels and making charges on behalf of officials. So it's a balancing act and we can discuss this offline, obviously. But I just wanted to give that little bit of intro of, you know, being daddy or mommy, so to speak, depending on if the auditor's male or female or whatever, versus empowering department heads and trusting them with credit where they get the purchase orders in. So we know, we don't want to, we get the card statement at the end of the month and we don't know who charged what if they didn't submit a purchase order. So it's, it's an evolved process and we're certainly, you know, you're ultimately the ones by ordinance who decide who the designated holder of the card is. Currently, it's us. We're the credit agent and essentially, you know, it makes sense that it's the chief financial officer, but we certainly are prepared to be fully accountable to what you want to see and for your oversight of the issuance of credit in La Porte County.
Yeah, I have talked to Mrs. Winski about maybe taking that back over again and certainly something that we're gonna consider. We'll talk about that with parties that need be.
We would welcome it.
Okay, no motion. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to have the cards reassigned to the commissioner's office until we decide who the designated person will be.
Point of order, per state law, any elected official participating remotely has to be able to have their face visibly seen when making motions or voting.
Could you turn your video on while you make the motion? Mr. Graham Rosson? Mr. Can you turn your video on while you make the motion?
While she's turning her video on. Now, Mr. Auditor, I just want to say thank you in your department for your diligence in catching that charge and being able to stop it before it actually hit the books completely and the payment went out that shouldn't have. So thank you for your department's diligence on that.
Sure. I will just say that if the commissioners like take over, there are cards outstanding right now, so I'm not really sure the practical implications of the
We'll take care of it. Restate your motion.
Traditionally, this is done by ordinance, but it's written.
May I speak? Here's the problem.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Your motion.
On May nineteenth, but okay, I'd like to make a motion because then I'll have our discussion after that.
We'll do that. But if you'd restate your motion first.
I'd like to make the motion to have the credit card returned back to the commissioner's office.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Then I will second it. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
I'd like to have a discussion though.
Please repeat. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, please repeat the question and the motion so we're all clear.
Could you repeat your motion, please?
Motion is to return the credit card to the commissioners.
Thank you. Further discussion now on that question.
I would just say that the proper motion, as I understand, is to make the commissioners the designated holder. That's the legal term. The designated holder of the credit card. That's the proper term. I read the ordinance a million times. I'm familiar, very familiar with all of this.
You weren't familiar with contacting us before you shut down the credit card, though.
We thought that we needed to protect, needed to protect motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the commissioners be the designated holder of the credit cards.
Right. Okay, we have this motion. Mr. Heaney, you gonna second that?
No.
Then I will second this time.
Can I say one more comment about this? I think it's important, so I would ask for you to allow this. We, the auditor's office ultimately pays all the county's bills. No side comments, please. So the notion that the commissioners themselves are the credit agent and in essence decide, oh, sure, go ahead, Mr. Department Head or Mrs. Department Head, and charge this or charge that. I think it's bad procedure and it's poor internal control. I mean, it's not pleasant work. It's, there's a lot. There's looking after people and there's the audit function is checking these charges and seeing, like, if they're traveling, okay, there's no alcohol. You can't, you know, obviously can't charge alcohol to the county. And there's, so, I mean, if we have the audit function of checking these bills, we've taken the responsibility of dunning department heads. We didn't get the purchase order. The credit card bill was due. There'll be interest charges. Which one of you out there charged this item on our broader credit card? If you have one credit card, the benefit of having certain department heads that have it is you know, this department has the one that charged it. When there's the one credit card and we give it out to certain people, if there's only one, you go back to one, you're gonna have to be more wild goose chases, like, which one of you people charged this? Who you got a credit card bill due? So it's involved and Joey will testify to it more than anything. I'd be surprised if she's willing to take it back, frankly. She was thrilled to finally put it off on our office, but we'll have the discussion. I think it's too preliminary and too early. I respectfully recommend to the attorney to make the commissioners the designated holder, but it's, you know, maybe a formality and we'll talk about it offline.
We have a motion in a second.
I'd like to speak to a point Commissioner Graham Rosson had earlier. I think any of us who have a credit card, if you see a fraudulent charge on it, you cancel the specific card where the fraudulent charge is. I think that was completely, completely appropriate for the auditor to do that. As to the group of individuals traveling, I use my county credit card, the one and only time I've actually ever placed a charge on my county credit card. Actually, got in contact and worked with the folks down in Georgia, got the proper forms back and forth so that I could sign. Up here, they emailed me the documents I needed to sign for the hotel to be able to remotely authorize a charge, signed it, put a copy of my driver's license with it, scanned it, sent it back down, so all the rooms got paid for. Had there only been one card, then there would have been no way for those rooms to get paid in total. It was a substantial amount for the rooms and the associated costs, associated for that, for the six people for their, I think it's a week-long child support and other seminar that they were at. I don't remember exactly the exact term of what it was, but anyway, so I think, you know, as things happened, they did function properly. There was a fraudulent charge. The auditor's office card, they canceled the card, that specific card, so that no additional fraudulent charges could be made. And, you know, another credit card in this case, the one that was issued to me, and again, the one and only time I've ever used it, is, was to pay for those employees' hotel rooms down there so that they wouldn't, you know, have a place to stay. So, and, you know, the system did work out fine. I know initially there was an issue, Commissioner Kramros. I think you would try to get involved, but you weren't able to get your card activated and there were some issues there. So I was more than happy to step in and get that taken care of for you.
You know what? Unfortunately, you're telling a lie because I was contacted by the people that were out there stranded. And I asked Mr. Stables to activate my card and he refused. He played games, gave me two separate numbers. And again, this is something probably we should talk about offline.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Has had the control of the card.
Let's focus discussion on the question.
Nothing wrong with the commissioners holding that.
We have a motion on the floor that will address it.
Well, everyone else was allowed to speak. And it wasn't, you know, the auditor still audits because there are many situations where we pass through bills and we approve them in the commission and Mr. Stables still audits them. So with the credit card, regardless, like every other bill that he is able to audit, he will still be able to audit the credit card as well. And so, and as far as the two hundred and forty-seven dollar bill that they canceled the credit card, I believe, because I have many credit cards, you can dispute that amount. There was no reason to shut it down. As that department knows that they make the reservations, they knew they had people away two days later and they didn't look into it properly and they shut the credit card down. It's an issue.
I don't appreciate you second guessing, second guessing publicly.
Offline. In the meantime, we have a motion that has been seconded on the floor to have the commissioners take charge of the credit cards for, at least for now, until we figure this out.
For the record, Commissioner Rosson.
In favor of that motion, say aye. Aye.
Point of order, Commissioner Graham Rosson's video is not on when she attempted to cast her vote.
Can I turn on your video to cast your vote, please?
For the record, the two hundred and forty-seven dollar charge was from India, like New Delhi, India, so we were especially concerned about it.
Aye.
Foreign country.
Aye. Motion is passed. Thank you. Moving along. Still Wednesday, right? Consider travel and lodge to municipal law seminar, June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three through June twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, Indianapolis, Indiana, for Attorney Scott Pagek. I would entertain a motion. And you have to leave your video on while you make your motion, Connie, please, or while you vote. Can I have a motion? Your videos, now your audio is off.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Discussion, how often, how often do we pay for county attorney to travel, to get CEU credits in the county? Do we know, has that ever happened before in the history of La Porte County?
Sure does. We've sent BG a few times that I remember. Departments other than the county attorney.
Sure, for county employees, we do send for county employees all the time and as well as elected officials. I'm just curious. I know as long as I've been here and been watching it, neither Attorney Jones, Attorney Friedman, anyone else we've gone, we've done this for.
Yeah, I've seen it many, many times over the years. Okay. Tom, do I vote? Do we vote on that? You made the motion. I second it. All in favor of the motions for travel and lodge municipal law seminar, aye. Consider the settlement proposal with NIPSCO. I have talked with NIPSCO. I've talked with Highway Department and all in agreement with the with the proposal. Attorney, I believe you've looked it over also. I think it's very fair to both sides.
Okay, I would move to approve the settlement proposal of NIPSCO.
I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Consider the legal service agreement with Attorney Scott Pagek. We've had a chance to read that over.
Motion to approve.
Just for a point of clarity here, we're increasing the rate to one seventy-five from one fifty over these.
Correct.
That was the standard rate.
Correct.
Just curious why I feel there's a need for a rate increase. I know it is difficult to find attorneys and, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars is the lowest, I think, in any of the neighboring counties as well. But I am curious here as to, why would be giving a seventeen percent raise? Mr. Pagek's been amazing, so this isn't anything to him. But, you know, Commissioner Graham Rosson, for the last month and a half, had been speaking about needing a lawyer with municipal experience. Obviously, you know, people specialize in different fields and it's normal to get in, move into different fields. It's perfectly normal and acceptable. But giving a seventeen percent raise off the bat for someone with no municipal experience that you really went a long way. I'm curious as to how that's, how you're finding that justified.
Well, your attorney, your personal attorney had no municipal experience either.
The firm did.
And then we haven't given any of the attorneys a raise in ten years.
Yeah, many years. And cost of living for everything. When most attorneys are starting off at about three hundred bucks. Sure, to your microphone.
If I may comment, please, Mr. Chairman. Fair question. Obviously, we've had inflation. Unless if you've been living in a bubble for the past summer, for the past year or so. And still one seventy-five an hour is still a discounted low rate compared to what most experienced attorneys charge. Most attorneys charge well north of two twenty-five an hour. That's the low end. Also, this attorney fee increase isn't just for my benefit, for however long I'm here. It's for the benefit of all attorneys we contract with as well, too. So this isn't specific or individual to me. This will be a benefit to all attorneys and hopefully attract other attorneys that we might consider contracting work out, too, that we in the past have not. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
No.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
For further discussion, I haven't, I'm gonna cast a no vote on this, but it's only because I don't believe anyone's reached out to the council for the fiscal end of this to see, because this is probably gonna spiral and affect all the attorneys or all the board attorneys and whatnot throughout the county. I think it's a little premature to do that without checking with the council first and getting some fiscal direction on this, but anyway, I'll vote nay for that reason.
For many things that we approve that to be sent to the council, this is just another thing that we do every meeting.
Next, I'm sorry, Commissioner Rosinsky, were you saying then that this is, needs to be sent to the council for ratification? Or are you just speaking in general?
Speaking the way we do business here, if you haven't been paying attention, we make a motion to send something to the council. This would be no different because they are the fiscal body. We make a motion to approve this agreement and we send it to the council for funding.
So you're saying that this one seventy-five then is going to be predicated on approval by that council?
To the council, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Consider addendum to software license agreement. Mike Schultz, assessor, you're not Mike Schultz. You're much better looking.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz couldn't be here, so I'm on behalf of the assessor's office. I talked to the attorney Pagek yesterday. I don't know if you have any questions?
You came up and discussed it with me in the office. The attorney's looked it over. I'm satisfied with it. I would entertain a motion to approve it. Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you very much. Consider amendment to build, operate, transfer agreement with Kingsbury Rail Project, Matt Reardon.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll second it, being on the RDC. I'm aware of what's going on. It's Yeah, I'll second it, being on the RDC, I'm aware of what's going on, it's, had a chance to look it over, you have, but we also have an attorney on the RDC that has also looked at it.
Yes, I have looked over the agreement, all of the commission has seen the agreement, no issues have been raised, this was just to add the ready grant part definition of under grants.
It's a big thing.
So it's, it, everything looks fine, I haven't received any concerns or questions, so I'm okay with it, thank you.
No, we, we didn't have any concerns when we passed it on the RDC.
There a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
With motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Consider request for permission to approach council for an additional appropriation of $39,288.69 for body cameras for Exxon Enterprises Incorporated, Marika Beatty, community corrections, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, how are you? Um, yes, Marika Beatty, Director, Community Corrections, um, we've come across some scary situations with our field officers and so that we can, um, not, we can avoid pending litigation for the county and for the safety and protection of our participants and our officers, we're requesting body cams for our field officers.
Think it's, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
That makes it safer. Next on the agenda, consider approval for Fair Board contract working at the fair, Ron Heig, Sheriff.
Good morning, Commissioners, uh, Ron Heig, your elected sheriff of La Porte County.
And I'm damn proud to know you.
Thank you, I come here this morning, this is our yearly task that we do, an agreement with the fair board for us to provide security at the fair during the week of the fair. Uh, this has gone to legal and I believe he is okay with this.
We do this every year and I have a motion to move.
Move to approve the fair board contracts for the sheriffs.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir, look forward to seeing you at the fair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, consider approval for fair board contract working at the fair, Andrew McGuire,
Good morning, so the same way as with the sheriff's department, this is our annual contract for 2023 for us to provide medical coverage at the fair, we work at first aid station from 11 to 11 every day at the fair, we also cover every special event that they have out on the track to make sure if there's any issues that we're there to take care of it.
Thank you, I would move to approve the, uh, fair board contract for EMS department for 2023.
Mr. Chairperson, sorry, excuse me, I just had a comment, I don't know if anything's been changed, but with, on page five, okay, there just needed to be a change to reflect Commissioner or President Graham Rosson as a contact for the county on page five, I just wanted to make sure that was completed, that's all, thank you.
Can I correct that, I apologize for that.
No worries, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
So moved with that correction.
With that correction, we have a motion and a second to approve. The contract with the EMS, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, consider additional local health funding from the Indiana Department of Health, Manalanners, Health Department Director, good morning, Man, is it still morning?
It is still morning, good morning.
We've been talking about this for a long time, it's, uh, pretty doggone important.
It is, it's a, it's a great opportunity for the county, for the state, so briefly, Senate Bill Four was passed earlier in the end of April, was now Senate enrolled Act Four, um, part of the Governor's Public Health Commission was providing funds from the state to, um, filter down to the local health departments and counties. So the first year, there was $75 million available, second year going forward, 2025 going forward, it's $150 million, um, going forward. The numbers that will, we will be receiving within our county is all based on population and how many counties opt into the, um, program. So we have a minimum, maximum number we may be receiving, but in order for us to get in on this, the, um, we have to opt into it, I do believe you have a resolution, um, that I hope we sign and support.
We do, thank you, I, I have a question for our attorney, what, do you have a chance to look at some of the, one of my concerns about, about this, uh, about this as it went through and some of those concerns were, were changed and alleviated as the bill progressed and its final passage, um, I, I, I think it may be prudent to give our county attorney some time to, uh, we have until September 1st to opt in, um, so we have multiple meetings between now and then, I think, I think it may be prudent to give our county attorney some time just to review it and make sure that, uh, are we going to maintain all the local control that we need. One of the things that I, I would hate to see is that, um, I think we're looking at the first year of 2024, probably at least $1.3 million, um, which would be about quarter million dollar match for the county, but at about $1.3 million, we have that kind of money coming in, I would hate to see, you know, us get set up in a position where we would need to and then the state do something, um, untoward, if you will, uh, that would put us in a position to need to then try and opt out in the middle of that cycle or while we're dependent upon those funds, so it'd be my suggestion, my motion to, uh, to, to table this and direct our county attorney to look a little bit deeper to make sure that we have all the local control that we're going to need, um, especially given the fact that we have until September 1st to actually opt in.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's totally at the pleasure of the board, however the board wants to proceed, the board can proceed with, uh, the vote or seconding it or tabling it and that will, if we table it, it'll go automatically onto the next agenda for the next meeting and so forth. I'll be more than happy to look into any concerns anyone has, this was brought to my attention, I don't have the exact date, but before today and there's no questions or concerns brought forward to me, so this is, I'll be more than happy to assist the board in any way I can, but you have the option of even moving forward today or since we have that September 1st deadline, if you want to give it some more time and we can table it, that's fine too, but that's at the board's pleasure, thank you.
So you, you are familiar with the, with the, uh, the funding, it, it issue, the way it was presented from the state, state saying, we want to give you more money, but you got to tell us you want it, and I don't know if you're familiar, if you're.
I, I have not read all the details of it, as stated before, I, I don't want to get into legal things in a public meeting, but I was provided notice of this proposed resolution for the state funding, the opt-in period must be done by September 1st of this year and I, no one has provided me with any concerns until now, and so now that there might be a concern or an issue, again, it's up to the board's pleasure how you'd like to proceed. I can't comment on that right now and I don't make legal judgments or opinions during meetings, thank you.
So you're making a motion to table it?
Uh, and, 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 uh, direct her attorney to, uh, give him the authorization to check into, to make sure we're going to be maintaining that local control that we need, as we know there's been different options that have happened with some of our ability to regulate septic and other issues, uh, because of some of that top-down direction from the state. Um, I know, you know, it's been, been an issue of contention as well with your department of some of the things that we have in some of these outlying areas, especially near a couple of our lakes, um, so, and I know that, that that's just one example I can think of off the top of my head that I know, I know has come up in the past, that's why with the date of September 1st, doing a little bit, a little bit more due diligence, I apologize in bringing this up to you sooner, I hadn't mentioned it initially when it came across to former county attorney, um, this was put on the agenda, the first time I saw it was when it was put on the agenda, which would have been, uh, you know, whatever it was, 49 hours ago.
Do we have a second on the motion to table this? Do we have a second?
No.
Seeing no second, the motion will die. Do we have another motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the, for the local, um, health funding, do we have a second? Chair will step down in second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Nay.
On the agenda.
With the, since you didn't call for further discussion, uh, my nay vote is being cast simply because I don't believe we've done full due diligence to make sure that we're not going to come out on the wrong side of this, it would be horrible for us to set up, um, you know, million dollar programs and then have to cut services in the middle of it if something comes up where we didn't have all of our ducks in a row beforehand, so I think it's premature, but I digress, and again, it's a no vote, thank you.
Next on the agenda, consider additional appropriation requests to approach council for funds for office supplies, $1,000 for equipment, repairs $2,500 and to replace tractor not to exceed $37,000, Jeremy Sebecky, Parts Department Superintendent, sir.
Thank you, um, yeah, the office supplies is mainly due to printing, you know, we don't have an in-house printing anymore, so our budget was a little short on that. Uh, equipment repair, we've kind of been hit with several major repairs to some old aging equipment that will be replaced in the next couple of years, but, uh, you know, we, we're, we had to make some repairs on that and then the tractor is a 1998, uh, it's kind of our workhorse, we do everything with it, you know, it's our biggest, you know, piece of machinery as far as tractors and we, so when we need to dig a hole or anything like that, lots of, lots of downtime with it, you know, hydraulic lines, several things have broken down, so it's, it's really time to replace that, so.
Comes a point where it's cheaper to buy something new than to keep.
And, and they're, they're actually offering a, a fairly decent trade-in amount if, if we don't need it somewhere else in the county.
Very good. All right, for the explanation, I'll entertain a motion.
I would make the motion to, uh, allow Mr. Sebecky to go approach council for his funding for office supplies, uh, equipment repair and, uh, tractor replacement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Consider request to travel and lease vehicle for trip to attend the 2023 Aging in Texas Conference in San Antonio, Texas for June 28th through June 30th, Catherine Schmidt, Director of Adult Public Protective Services. There she is.
Good morning. Um, this is actually two separate requests, so, um, our grant, as I'm sure you know, from the state, fully funds our program and ends June 30th of this year and will be renewed again Ju- July 1st, but all of those funds need to be spent prior to June 30th and we had set aside money for health insurance for employees that was not used because of some staffing changes, so we have, uh, a considerable amount of money left in our budget, um, for, to expend by the end of June and we were able to secure, um, the possibility of a leased Malibu car from Team Chevy and we could pay the full three-year lease upfront for a total of $12,259 and that would wholly come from state funds, so there would be no obligation to the, to the county. And then also, um, I have two investigators that are interested in attending the aging conference in San Antonio.
Sounds like you got it figured out.
I checked twice.
Overall, it's going to save, uh, save the county some money, thank you, um, I would move to approve, uh, both these requests for travel and, uh, and the lease.
That motion, do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck with that. Seeing no further agenda items, uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Adjourn, thank you.
Yeah.